Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
We were one short this morning. And so you get Rusty and I, and I ran up the stairs.
Ah, all right. Way to go.
We thought we'd do a lot of Q and A today. But you all know that this time of the year is when we give our report to the community through the State of the County address. And wanted to share the theme with you, want to get some feedback from you on the things that we've been talking about with, I know Robert sent some emails out asking for examples. And then we'll take this wherever you guys want to go. So that's a little bit different than what we typically do, but for our commission corner. But we want to share with the community our concept and what we've talked about with a culture of service. A culture of quality customer service to the community. And of course, that, as we've shared in here, that really begins with what we do inside the courthouse and serving one another. Offices serving one another. Those that are office holders and directors and department heads, serving the community, serving their staff. It's kind of that inverted leadership that we've talked about. So we wanted to throw it out to you and try to get some examples of things that we can share with the community about service. Then we'll talk about some of our projects and maybe some of our funding. It's budget time, that's always a, just a delightful time, right? So let's just throw it out and open it up and talk about some of those examples. Anybody have one? Maybe it's something we do every day that we don't think of, but maybe the community doesn't really think of it.
Bob, I'm gonna throw something out there, too. And there are no bad questions because it took me a while to learn all the acronyms. And I had actually approved something, I'm ashamed to say, just trusting Kevin Barnes, that it was needed. And then the second time he came back and asked for it, I was, I had to ask. Because we had made, this was our second major crack purchase. And I was really concerned about why we were purchasing crack. And it's C R A C, and it's computer room air conditioning. So I felt much better. So anyway, if I could ask the question after approving it the first time, that's, that's the shame in all this. There are no bad questions.
But that's one thing we do really well in government is acronyms.
We do.
It's like alphabet soup, right? No, but seriously, along those lines, a lot of times the community does not know what we do. Funny story. I was talking with someone who was pretty, I thought, pretty well informed and stayed up on current events in the community. And they said, what's going on down there? What are you guys building? I thought, we have talked, I know we've talked about it at all the community groups we go to. It's been on the news. How does somebody not know what's going on on Booneville? So we just explained it. So anyway, thoughts? What, what do you think is important for us to share with them about what we do? Most of you come to huddle. So you get a lot of the department trainings and things, learning about the other departments. What do you think's important for your friends and neighbors to know?
There's two courthouses. And you got a lot of traffic in government. The judicial courthouse. Don't know where to go. It's unclear. I'm in the courthouse. Why isn't it here? Helping to understand why the state courthouse would be a lot. I'd love to help with that.
And maybe going beyond what we're doing with our report. How would you all rate our signage? Since that issue came up? Because I have run into that. The limited time I'm in this building, I will occasionally run into folks in the hallway looking for the public defender's office, where they're supposed to be for court. That's a good one. Thoughts?
I often direct people to, what's the address that's on your paperwork? So I'm not sure they're looking for the proper address or maybe not able to find it in reference to your signage question.
Okay, that's a good point. The actual address, yeah? Repeating the questions or the answers? Okay, so the question for the online audience was, what do we think of our signage? And you were saying in the back that it would help if it was a little bit more centralized. And your example, if I heard you right, was at the historic courthouse. It's a little kind of maybe off-centered, not near the, not near the entrances, is that what you mean?
Yeah, it's like, at least coming in from walk up the stairs and it's kind of there.
Okay. Near, yeah, because most people come from that parking lot, they're coming up the stairs, they don't know where it is. Okay, that's a good point. Anybody else? I thought Alan was gonna raise his hand.
Yeah, one problem is, you know, when people walk into this building and they're lost and confused. And they don't know where an office is until they're standing in front because the sides are not perpendicular to the hallways. They cannot look down the hallway and see here's what's happening.
Okay, so kind of some shingle type signage, okay. And the wall, okay. Anybody else on that? Shane?
I actually have the video board where the help desk is at. That can direct people. If I should mention a, I think that would be a nice, because when we don't have them there, it's for people to kind of see that. Say there for a second. I think that will be nicely there.
Okay. Okay, that's a good point, yeah.
I'd like to add, I really, really jump on with the electronic portion of that sign. Because we have signs in a lot of places, but people just don't like to read them. I mean, we have ropes to come into our office that literally says, stop here and/or whatever, and they often just don't read, so.
It's for all the other people.
That's the electronics and the eye-catching, that's what they're used to. They're used, they're your phone, they're used to electronics.
Okay, good point. Good point. I thought of something else, go ahead.
Oh, guess we're over here.
Yes.
Realize they come in on the basement for not.
That's a good point.
Maybe signage in the elevator a little bit more.
Or you are on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, something else we can consider along with the signage for the younger generation, maybe we could put together some sort of an app on your phone that you click the app and it takes you where you need to go.
I, in the courthouse, I have QR codes posted throughout the building. And you can use your phone and access that day's court schedule that way. It's a very inexpensive way to take right to a site that would tell you what's where.
That's a great idea, I like that. Yeah, people are used to QR codes.
Yeah, yes.
Just in the basement, we have two buttons for the elevator. The one that hasn't worked in 50 years and the one that's currently working. And all the elderly people come and they press the older button. Stand there and it's horrible that it does.
I've thought of that and I, I shouldn't assume, but I guess the reason it was not taken out was it was historic or there was nothing put over the hole.
Just, yeah.
But that is a problem. I've actually observed the same thing. What, anything else along those lines, speaking of customer service? I mean, I like where this has gone because we were, we started out talking about what can we share with those that may not come in the courthouse that much? But also when they come in, we want it to be welcoming and easy to navigate. Anything else along those lines?
Forgive me, I'm a newbie, so this is just a question, maybe you tried it before, maybe it's impossible. But I've always wondered if there's any, if any opportunity to decentralize anything we do? Because when I come here, I always come and I see oftentimes senior citizens who seem like this is a huge effort to get to our location. They're coming from Walnut Grove, who knows where they're coming from? And it feels a little overwhelming to them because of the distance and navigating the structure. Sometimes they're in wheelchairs or they have different disabilities. And I'm just always wondering, in those busy seasons, is there any opportunity to do something in a municipal office somewhere else? I know, you know, I S and our computer system, but is there anything that could ever be done in other locations so people wouldn't have to drive to Springfield? Particularly because this is a pretty big county.
That's a good thought. I know, not speaking for the other office holders, but I know the commission has gone out in years past to some of the other cities to hold commission meetings. Maybe one of the busiest times of the year, the end of the year when tax bills are due, is when we get the most people in. We can always be creative if an office holder wanted to have different locations. Sort of like what Shane has done with the centralized, the new polling locations where they can go to a different area. The libraries and so forth for, is it early voting? Yeah, and on election day. That's a good point. We can be, we could be creative with some of those things perhaps. Somebody else had their hand up over here, yeah?
I was just going to also add that the signage for the elevator. Because we have been on the second floor now because of construction in the basement. And there are so many people, elderly included, coming up the stairs and not being able to breathe, totally winded as.
Like I was? I knew better than to take the elevator.
A lot of folks that have had some trouble since we've been on the second floor, a lot. And we ask them, did you know we have an elevator? A lot of them say no.
So signage to get to the elevator, okay. Good point, good point. Anybody else on that? Yeah?
Not on the signage, but just for our building. I know a lot of times we have citizens that come in and they need help and our employees do an amazing job. I see Julie all the time telling somebody where to go or walking them to there to make sure they get to the spot. But used to, we had, I think they were called Team Green members and they would sit at the information desk. I know we don't do that anymore because campus security sits there occasionally. But I would really love to see campus security in our building more. I know that they are spread thin with the judicial courthouse and everything going on over there. But just what last week or two weeks ago, we had an unsheltered woman sleeping in our lactation room on the third floor.
Heard about that.
And so it took them a while to get over here, although it wasn't necessarily a safety concern. She was screaming and yelling profanities at the H R members and the lactating mommies in the room. So that's just something to kind of keep in mind is a safety person here or campus security here in the building at all times. Because we're kind of like sitting ducks. As far as like our sheriff's office does an amazing job responding, but if you're not here, there's not a lot that can be done until somebody does get here. I know the Bush building has it locked down and you have to check in, which we can't do that because we have lots of offices. But just like safety for us in this building is something that I would just like to bring up.
That's, that's something that's on our mind a lot. And I was made aware of that situation, I think it was last week. It's a, it's a constant concern. And one of the reasons we put funding in last year, was it last year or the year before? For the additional campus security. So we'll definitely continue to keep that in mind. I think once all the activity, this is just a guess again, but I think once all the activity settles down in a year or so and we get everything done, and then we can focus on, how do we get people to the right place? So we're, you know, after we're done shuffling. Yes, very good. We were talking about, thank you for that, for that reminder. We were talking about just the security in this building. And there was someone who was, decided to take up residence in the lactation room. That's on the second floor? Third floor, yeah. And so campus security, having someone sit at the desk on a more regular basis. And so we'll continue to keep that in mind. That's something that I think is important, especially as we begin wrapping up. And we can focus more on just directional information and also some of these other things that have been brought up, that's good. Anybody else on that before we kind of transition? Thought it would be good, too, just to talk about its budget time. And we have, we have some, some challenges like we always do. One of those things, and I, I shared it this way at the County Commissioners Association Board Meeting I was at in Warrenton last week. And it was actually with two Green County citizens who were there. Our couple of folks from our architecture firm were at the event. And I said, we have a structural problem in the county. We've talked about this before, since there's no use tax. So all online sales in the county are zero sales tax, even though the citizens passed a sales tax. That, due to a court case, was separated out. Because it wasn't a sale at a brick and mortar business. So the way I explained that was, now that we have the numbers, the county budget has actually been reduced now by up to $12 million a year because we've, we don't collect taxes on all sales. And that was rather eye-opening to these folks who know a lot about our operation. But that has really put the county over the years, over the decades, increasingly in a difficult position. So we don't know exactly when we're going to address that. But we don't think that it's a smart idea to try to address that while we still have construction going on. Because, just like I told you about the individual who said, oh, what's going on down there? And they were very informed. People have a notion, they've got all kinds of money. They don't, a lot of times even realize that that is bonded, those are bonded funds. So this is something that's increasingly a challenge for us. We, we see it in a lot of ways and we've had some conversations. You wanna, with some of the business community as we're out and talking?
Sure, some of the business folks are starting to take notice, too, that, hey, wait a minute. We have an onsite location, we have a brick and mortar store. And we employ people that work in our store and people will come in and look things over. I'll just take a shoe store, for example, and try on our shoes and look at these things. And they go online and make that purchase. Our people, we're paying people, we're paying property taxes, we're paying our taxes to our employees and those sorts of things. Yet somebody can go online and buy shoes and they can actually buy them cheaper because they don't have the county sales tax applied to that. And we don't think that's right. So we're beginning to hear from some folks on that. And I know the Springfield area chamber of commerce has heard from some folks and they've even said, hey, let us help you with this. We will, we will push and promote this. Let's take a look at what, what needs to happen. And honestly, in, in hearing the folks that know how these sorts of events need to take place, aside from our projects, if we start the ball, which we have rolling now towards getting ready to educate the population or the voting population on that, timeline looks like it's going to be closer to sometime in 2027 just to get ready to have the information available to present to the public so that we have a fair chance at this passing. For those of you that don't know, the use tax failed in the 90s. And it was put on the ballot again in the mid, early 2000s.
13.
13. And it failed again. So this is kind of one of those issues that people didn't fully understand. My hopes are that in 2013, especially in the 90s, they had no idea what a use tax was. They had no idea what the internet was. So things have progressed now where even my 15-month-old grandson got the, his parents a prescription to Paramount Plus at 6 o'clock Saturday morning, just playing with the remote. So everybody understands, which I'm gonna brag about the little guy, he's 15 months old. I told my son, I said, my youngest grandson sleeps in a crib and ate half a rack of ribs this weekend. So anyway.
He wanted to see some cartoons.
Yeah, he did. Paramount Plus and a half a rack of ribs, I'm good to go. Somebody changed my diaper. So anyhow, almost like our last president, wasn't it? Anyhow. Things sometimes come out that shouldn't, but that's funny.
Okay, moving right along. We also, as I said, we've talked about, we've talked about that with the community. And it has been very interesting as we explain, and, and we, we don't know what those funds would be spent on. That's a process that we go through every year with the budget season. But I can tell you this, we cannot compete with the salaries that are paid by our partners in this region. We are down 10 people in the prosecutor's office, assistant prosecutors. Number one, there are not enough people going to law school and we have, it's impossible to compete with Kansas City and St. Louis. On the law enforcement side, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't really make a distinction there because prosecutors are law enforcement. But like deputies and detention officers, we cannot compete with what Springfield just did with their pay scale. And we get along really well with the folks in, in, at the city of Springfield. The new mayor and the new city manager have been, we've had several meetings and I've been pleasantly surprised. But we told them, you may be awash with cash, as was described in a recent meeting, but we're not. And we cannot compete with the raise that you just gave folks. And that's going to really hurt because people follow the money. And it's, and we, we live in a market-driven economy and that also includes salaries. And we need to be able to continue delivering quality service to the citizens. So the story we want to share with citizens is, let's keep the tax low. Let's keep sales tax low and tax all the sales. There's no reason to get in a place where we have to go to the citizens for a tax increase on what's increasingly becoming a smaller percentage of the sales. Why should the people who actually employ people, the businesses here, actually pay property tax and fund our fire districts, our schools, our parks and our libraries? Why should we, why should we make it more difficult to do business there? So that's, that's what we are sharing with the citizens as we go out there. Help us keep the tax low by taxing all the sales. And, and also let us continue to deliver quality service and be able to compete. I think the numbers at Highway are about 30 that we're down right now. And I can't tell you how many times, I think I've said this before, folks will call me and say, we need the side of the road mode. And I always ask them if they're looking for a job because we're hiring. I've not had any takers.
No, no. You know, Bob, I think it's important, too, and I think everybody here does understand that, that this commission at, at the heart of who we are and what we really believe is that we have, that the county business of Green County, you folks take care of the citizens of Green County. And it's gotta be a passion, it's a drive, it's what you do. As a commission, our job is to take care of you guys. And, and we really do see it that way. With salaries, with, with supplies, with vehicles, with whatever it takes. So we do have a heart that if we take care of you, you take care of the citizens, everybody's happy. That's why we, if you've paid attention to the budget, if we could get this use tax through, $12 million on our budget gives us a great deal of breathing room to do the things that we want to do. And we have through the years, when we first were talking about this many years ago, honestly somewhat embarrassed about where the salaries were at. And that's why we said, we've got to lift this up, we've got to do a better job of that. And we pushed hard to do that. And each year, we take a deep breath and look at the budget and see where the sales number, the sales tax revenues numbers are at and say, what can we do this year? So we try very hard every year. Once we can get this use tax passed, I think it's going to be much easier to, to take care of the needs. In fact, we had a program for vehicle replacement that was very, very good. John took on the task as one of the three commissioners. We often divide it, you take this, I'll take that. John took the task on with Cindy's office on replacement of vehicles. And how could we set up a vehicle purchase plan? We knew that through the sheriff's office at that time when Dodge made charges for law enforcement, that we could buy it at a government rate, put 50,000 miles on it and sell it for what, really for what we bought it at and continue to roll through. Well, two things happened. One, we, our funding just got tight. And number two, Dodge quit making that car for, for police officers. So we went from spending $28,000 for a vehicle to now having to spend close to 70. So that mix got really turned on its head and that's made it challenging because now we kind of purchase as necessary again. And when something happens, it's like, that kind of hurts the budget.
Yeah, we put off, two years ago, we put off the, the regular rotation purchase. And then last year, I think we only did about half of those. So we, I know this time of year, we always ask everyone to sharpen their pencils and tighten their belts. And it's no different this year, but we wanted to come to you and not only say that, we wanted to say, we have a vision of how it can be better and we're working on that. I think it's in the next couple of weeks that I'm meeting with the polling people. Can't remember, it's Alexson. I had a meeting a week or so ago with several community leaders who have been down this road and gone out to the public for a ballot measure. I've never done that. This is something totally new to me. Some of you have been here when we've gone to the public prior to my time, but this is something totally new. Third time, we cannot fail. And so we want to make sure the timing is right, we want to make sure the messaging is right. We want to make sure the plan of what the funds would be used for is right. And so one of the things we'll be doing is a community survey, which I hope to put in this year's budget because that will actually ask the citizens, like entities in this county do on an annual basis, okay? They do on an annual basis with public funds, asking the citizens, how are we doing on a scale of 1 to 10? What would you like to see us do better? What services are we providing that you find value in? What should we be doing that we're not doing? So we'll be asking the community what they want to do. And I think that's really the first step. So we've got a few minutes, actually, we're pretty close to time. Burning questions. We kind of wound up doing more talking than Q and A, but we did a little bit at the front end. What questions does anybody have? We answered all the questions.
Hey, look at that, they're speechless.
Advice, we'll take advice, too.
I have a question for you, Bob.
Okay, sure.
That we're getting a, keep the taxes low, but tax all the sales. What are the next steps? You're gonna survey the community, when do you anticipate this coming to fruition?
Well, it would not be before the construction is done. And this project that we're working on right now should be wrapped up about a year from now. And the commission will move into this building as really the last of all of the moves. But we won't have steel going up after this project is done down the street or up the street. So by the spring of '27, everything will pretty much be done. That's why I've told the community when it's come up, we would not be coming to the public before April of '27. But the commission's made no decision even to do it. We've had discussions. We really would like to hear from the business community and we have. This really should be something that they are leading. So we're talking to the chambers of commerce in our nine cities. We're laying a lot of groundwork out there. I talk about it every time something comes up about the county. So that is slow education, but we're hoping to plant those seeds over time. And then when we do make the decision, we would have already had the polling. So I hope to see polling, it's not, it's not voter polling, it's community surveys, which and like I say, entities in this area and across the state can and do pay for with public funds. pay for with public funds. So we want to know, like we did with, um, CARES and ARPA, although it was not full, uh, wide scale. We want to do something wide scale and find out what the citizens, how they want to direct us.
Grow our budget in Green County is to grow the economy in Green County. And I know the city has placed on the ballot in November, this, this hotel tax to build a convention center. The folks, they've given us the numbers who run these studies and with great success and have a track record so that they can really pinpoint pretty well, pretty accurately, how much revenue is generated. Say that if we get a, a convention center or an event center, what they're calling it, it will generate a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars per day. Not per day that an event is open, but a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars by three sixty five of new money coming into our community. So that's another way to grow our economy. So we're also thinking in those terms, how do we grow the economy? And also how do we, uh, move towards getting this use tax in place? So either of those or both will really help our mission and what we try to do here at Green County.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Rusty. And think about the economic activity of almost a million dollars a week. We would be receiving sales tax at the county on that as it comes into the community. So, um, that's a big deal. And the tax, uh, that's been proposed for this November. Um, it's not a countywide tax. It's a city hotel motel tax. So it'd be people coming into the community, not, not a tax necessarily on our citizens. Um, and of course, there's about thirty million in funding that the state has, uh, set aside for that. So they asked us if we would go in on that project though, and you can imagine what I told them. We have no money. So anyway, great question. Anybody else? All right. Hope you had a great Labor Day weekend. Have a wonderful week. It's a short one.
Have fun. Thank you.